Here we go. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mary Commission. This will serve as our regular meeting, July 25th, 2022. That's a very good day. That's my wife's birthday.
Happy birthday.
She sent me a gift bite, though. That tough. Next on the agenda is the invocation. Tonight, under the leadership of Pastor Bennett, we have the youth pastor. Mr. Youth Pastor Polk will lead us in the invocation. Mr. Polk. Amen. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you are able, please stand in face of the flag. Good deal.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, not God, individual, religious, or any other. You may be seated. Commissioner Durham wanted to bring his comments over to the regular meeting. So before we entertain the approval of the agenda, let's stick Mr. Durham's right there with staff comments. Is that okay, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal. So with that addition, at this time, the next item on the agenda is to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of the elite stars. And we will have... Say again? Fifth grade first. Let's come up fifth grade. Here we go. Come on up here. Let's sort of get centered right here. All right, now, just introduce everybody. And sort of tell how y'all got that journey together to the national championship. Yeah, say who you are.
One tale of joy. I coached in fifth grade. We played in Dalton County. Win or go on five and O. Played the number one team in Alabama. We beat them in the championship by two points. Played the number two team in Alabama. We ended up beating them by nine. Played the number one team in Chelsea. We beat them by nine. Played a team out of South Carolina. We beat them by like eight. These were the players.
Who you got with you, Coach?
Spurs, I got Juan and Manny. Pooh.
I got two.
Markel Jordan. Isaiah Seale. The Derrick Henry. Markel Stone. Isaiah Oles. Xavier Lipton. AJ. And Isaiah Oles.
Good deal. All right.
I'm gonna say Isaiah Oles.
Also, also, real quick, one quick thing. Do we have another coach? One of these coaches has Mr. Mark going through a couple of health issues. I've said a good word for him, but right now, he's part of this group also. We want to recognize him.
Amen. Good deal. Grab some pictures.
Got your ring.
Put your ring on.
Stevie and that, I want to get with that, too.
It's basic one with the jewelry. Congratulations, guys.
Good job, guys.
Where's Coach? Next group. Next group. Next group. As always, I tell everybody that our greatest ambassadors are our children. I wasn't in Dalton, Georgia playing basketball that Douglas, Georgia was up there, Colton County was up there. Our kids represented the great. All right, over here, we got some sort of... You're in the center. Y'all come on back. That cute girl with the trophy.
First things first, I do want to introduce... Hey, first things first, I just want to introduce you guys. I'll be only number one national ranked team girl, eighth grade group, 14 U. Like, I think 14 U, one by one, Coach Kiel got them.
Okay, we have Lachner Edwards. We have Janaya Wilcox. Lexi Bradford. Amber Seale. Arianna Lewis. Mahogany Killer Brew. Paul Wright Hill. And I'm Paul, Edward Paul. Jasmine Porter. Paris Riley. And Aria Paul. And I'm Coach Paul and Coach D.
Yeah.
I think, Coach, we started the season off with in Dalton, Georgia as well. The girls pretty much held it down, won, out there qualified, got in free for the play in nationals. They did their thing. Our state got canceled, so we hate that. So we're gonna go down there and win that one, too, so they got lucky. But we went down to Winter Haven, Florida this week, past week, two weeks.
Two weeks, two? Where we at? Two weeks now.
But they went down there, won three games in one day. And I think they were a little tired from that. And then we got to put it straight into the championship game against a team out of Louisiana. Girls play awesome, probably the best we've ever seen them play. I think defensively, anyway. Officially, we still got to get better every other day. But they work hard all year long, and we just continue to keep going.
Good deal.
Good job.
We had our own hot shot event to first place tonight. We had, and I think it was by Paris Riley. We also had the free throw shooter. She won first place. And it's Ariana Lewis. And we won a team.
All right, Coach.
I just want to take the time to thank the parents. The community for supporting my kids. Y'all, I want y'all to understand my work and thank you for the... Going to school, coming in, having school activity, coming up to the gym. I want to help them, thank them, send them to the rest park. I do not suppose they need to practice. Because they put hard work in every day. We open up to the public for anybody that come to train in the program. We're the ones that personally thank them. Thank them and very, very true when you see these kids. They can be just as proud of our parents. So we'd like y'all to acknowledge y'all parents and not, not to...
Let's grab some pictures. Let me go from you. Grab some pictures. Put your ring, put your ring. Get your ring. Get your ring. We're good. Good deal. One more round of applause. It's rocking.
I ain't brought my things with on it.
All right, Coach. Coach. Got one more?
I didn't know they wanted to win the national championship. My boy wouldn't be out there in court. I didn't buy those my hands up. I can't tell you where I'm in range. We don't turn down no kids, and we're all about support. And anyway. They work hard, and we train and try to teach them. Not just about basketball, about life skills also. Teach them how to be better, young men and young women. So if you got anybody, a kid that just wants to learn and train, we got good people, mentors. Or others who want to start fishing wars. Anything you can do to do to help your kids, we all for it. And that's what the name program is about. And believe it or not, it's our ministry, and we use this ministry. And we owe these children. That's what it's about.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I think next, we have to recognize some parks and recreation champions. Yes, sir. We're gonna have golf. We're gonna come to golf first. Then, and then swim. Now, the kids that we have, some are not here, often big, big time. But we do want to recognize the kids and children that we do have. Right now, that's Bentley. Bentley Taylor. Mr. Taylor is gonna be our state running up eleven under ten. All right, we'll recognize him. Young man, Mr. Taylor.
I'd be your commissioner for Parks and Recreation.
Good deal. Congratulations. Oh, yeah, baby. Well, we have some young ladies that were state champs, singles champ, Josie Morgan. Ms. Morgan, please, sir. Twelve number singles. Ms. Morgan was also a participant of doubles team. And Ms. Sailor, Sailor, I'm not even trying to pronounce the last name, okay? So Ms. Sailor, please come up. And they were the state champs in twelve number singles and twelve number doubles. All right. And right now, we move forward to swim team. Obviously, all the participants, they're not here now, but we certainly will recognize them. Coach Ansley, please come up. And Coach Mitchell, please step forward. But we did have thirteen state champions in swim this past season. Our team was not here. But Ms. Ansley and Coach Gil was due their thing.
So we finished off, just began this season with 145 swimmers in all. We took 97 to state. We finished out winning our sixth state championship. We did have 13. I want to talk about the individuals, because we're not here. We had Arabelle Roberts, Annalee Osteen, Sam Walker, and Asher Adams win their own individual state champions. And we also took nine relays to state and won their state championship.
I want to hold here.
We began this season with 145 swimmers. We ended up taking 97 to state. We won our sixth state champion this year. We had four individual state champions. That would be Annalee Osteen, Arabelle Roberts, Joseph McCarthy, Sam Walker. I'm sorry, five, Asher Adams. I forgot one. And then we took, that's a good problem to have. When you have two, you need to remember them. We also had nine relays to take on the state championship as well.
And how close was second place to us?
Second, we doubled second place.
We doubled second place.
We won with 2,000 points. Second place had 1,000 points.
That's a great...
I'd like to add one quick, one quick comment. Mayor Paul put so much pressure on us with his new pool. We didn't have a choice. He said he was gonna fill in the pool if we didn't pull one off again.
Good deal.
I do have two swimmers here, I'm sorry. Ethan Taylor and Eryland Brolty. These are relays.
If that's how you pronounce that last name, Brolty. Congratulations, buddy. Good job.
All right, for all our national and state championships, the rest of it is adult business. Y'all may, y'all may stay and listen to this boring stuff, or y'all may depart. I mean, I do not hear their names, but I would be with this, not the church. To acknowledge them, we do have some track members in our community that's to be going on to the national event. Mr. Johnny between Lee's Skills there, man. We want to recognize them also. They're part of the track program here. Whether they're present or not, if you hear their name.
Okay. Shacey Moore. Jakaria Moore. And Melissa... Melissa Kennedy. And, excuse me, what's his name? Those three. They're on an 800 meter long, you know, 100 meters.
Good deal. All right, we will give them both about a minute.
The first two teams, obviously, are one of the first two teams.
That's a, that's actually, we're out. Anytime. They're going always. Quick, get right to block. All right, here we go. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items. And as always, we're going to have... Tonight, we're gonna have our utilities director, Mr. Mike Hudson, read off the items that are on the consent agenda. Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Tonight, we have seven agenda items coming over on consent agenda. Item one, approval of the July 11th, 2022 meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the purchase of the Hydrostop Vista Vows as a sole source vendor. Item four, appointment to the Douglas Coffee County Planning Commission. That's Mr. Kevin Kepler. Item number eight, approval of the service contract with the Southern Georgia Regional Commission. Item number nine, approval of the Premier Sports Complex Top Dressing Air Evading. Item number 11, approval of the, to not tender option on the plant Vogal projects. Number 12, approval of the vehicle purchase that related to the code supply chain, giving the city manager six months to buy vehicles under budgeted circumstances.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed on the consent agenda. It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is going to be work session items brought forward. And again, Mr. Hudson will lead us through that. I think we have a few items to come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. First item will be the advertisement of appointments to the airport commission. Ms. Ebony Dobson.
Good evening, Mayor Commission.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are seeking permission to advertise for appointments for the airport commission.
So basically, we'll run that for two weeks. And if they get anybody, they'll bring anybody forward. Everybody's cool? Next item, Mr. Hudson.
Next item is hold the first reading of text amendments ordinance to unify land development code. Jerome Adams.
This being ordinance made in the City of Douglas, Code of Orders, Chapter 111, Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, Sign, Section 111, Dash 371, 375, 379, to appeal all other orders in conflict here with the right of effect of other persons. Little named by the Mayor Board Commission, Douglas and Reagan, being standard, law and party thereon. Unified Land Development, City of Douglas, certified by Mayor Board Commission, City of Douglas. On February 28th, you have your opinion, standing in the other. Types of sign, uh, permitted, sign standard matrix. Movement and disposition of signs, often read for the first time in regular league, Mayor Board Commission, City of Douglas, for July 25th, 2022. You'll have the second reading on this, August 8th.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson, next item.
Next item is item six, hold the first reading of the ordinance and amendments here into the manufacturing mobile home overlay.
This being ordinance made in the City of Douglas, Code of Orders, Chapter 111, Unified Land Development Code, Article 4, Special Land District, Special District, Section 111, 107, B2B1. And Article 7, supplemental standard, Section 111, Dash 268, Z03, Manufacturing Home Parts, or appeal all orders in conflict here with the right of effect of other persons. Little named by the Mayor Board Commission, Douglas and Reagan, being standard, law and party thereon. Unified Land Development, City of Douglas, certified by... I thought about the Mayor Board Commission, City of Douglas. On February 28th, 11th, it's been called. Chapter 111, the manufacturing mobile home overlay district. Chapter 111, 7, supplemental standard, often read for the first time in regular league, Mayor Board Commission, City of Douglas, for July 25th, 2022. You'll also have the second reading of this order from August 8th.
Good deal. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is item 10, advertise, permission to advertise vacancy on the recreation board. That'll be Mr. Stevie Young.
Good evening again. The city commission just moved forward to advertise for a vacant post on the recreation commission, a city post.
Okay, we'll put that in the proper places. Do it for two weeks, and y'all come back and talk to them. Thank you. Okay?
Mayor Paul, that's all the items brought forward.
Good deal. Are there any staff comments? Any staff comments? Mr. Durham. I was gonna let staff and then him.
Okay, no, I don't think there's any staff comment.
Commissioner Durham.
Good evening, Mayor Alicia.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Durham.
I'm going to stand before y'all to ask. I'm gonna talk to our board as well as our community. And my question is, when will this end? When will this end? Our community have been going through some turbulent times. And we have had a lot of gun violence happening going on in our community. Last meeting, Commissioner Pearson spoke and asked, you know, what were we gonna do about what was going on? And since then, we have been faced with more gun violence. Two times in one week. Two times in one week. And I didn't only just come to talk to the Mayor Commission. I just want us to reason and come together. But I also want to talk to our community, our young people. I am, I am a millennial. I'm a young person. And ever since those shooters have happened, I have spoken to our city manager, which I thank him. I thank our, our Mayor Commission, because we have, I mean, they have worked. Soon as accidents happen, everything, you know, they worked in play. Our city manager, he was, you know, texting basically everything. And I thank him for that, and I thank the Mayor Commission. But what I want to say is to our young people, when will this end? I could just think about the lady that was home at her house on Roper Street, enjoying her family, and 12 rounds entered her yard. When will this end? I could think about neighborhoods. I went and talked to one of, one of the latest, I call her one of the matriarchs in our community. And she don't mind me saying her name, Mrs. Irene Murray. And she was out on her back porch. And she thought it was firecrackers that was sound off. But her son came to her and said, Mama, those were shooting. That was a shooting right around the corner. When will this end? And I have received, ever since I gave us, I did, I addressed the community. I addressed our young people on Facebook as well as others. And I have received friend requests from other young people that I don't even know. But when I look on their pages, they don't identify to me. They're not mean, you know, my age and era. But when will we go to the community and be the voices of the community and tell them enough is enough? And we're here to stop the violence and stop the acts. And I talked to Ms. Murray, and Ms. Murray was saying, we could come up with marching. We could come up with, you know, programs. Because a lot of these young people that are going through in our community, their households are lacking something, something. They're lacking something, and they're looking for someplace to, to go to, something to vent to. And I just want to know, when is this gonna end? Michael and Pastor Newton and Sister Paula Smith, y'all please stand. They are with the Colton County Economic Coalition, also theirselves. And they got with pastors and people of the community. And they want, and they also got with our police chief. And we thank him, too. They got with the police chief. And they wanted to meet on Thursday at 6 o'clock under the pavilion, under the, under the stage, because the COVID numbers are rising. They want to meet at Roundtree Park. They want to meet at Roundtree Park under the pavilion. They, they invite the pastors. They would like to send invitation towards the Mayor Commission, because it's gonna take all of us to work together to cease this problem in our community. So I'm asking the board, could we, because the parks and recreation, the parks are closed at this time. But if we could, because we also want the police department also there and the chief, because they have spoken with Chief Edmison, could we open up the park for that Thursday so that we can meet with church leaders, leaders of the community, Mayor Commission, and people from the community so that we can plan something to stop these violent forces that's going on in our community? See, it's our community now, but it could be years later. That thing can turn around quick. So I'm gonna ask the Mayor Commission, is that okay? If that...
What time? Six o'clock.
Yeah, we want to do it when it's time, when it's not so hot, about 6 o'clock that evening. And we have gotten with the police chief. We ain't here to cheer. So we got with several people within the community. And we're just looking to try to all come together so that we can get a result. And do whatever we need to do to come together to get a result with our youth, programs in place, whatever we got to do.
And then, if we haven't contacted everyone yet, we probably didn't have a definite date and time and place. But the name, they would be contacting once y'all supposed to be there.
So just to give you a little rundown of what we're looking at, police, sheriff, commission, parents, community activists, clergy, parks and recreation, house and the garden, mental health, counseling, everyone.
Also have a gang, but it's, um, with those first six groups. We talked about them, and about us, kind of.
So with that being said, Stevie, our Parks and Recreation Director, do we have the votes to...
I have a problem.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be at Roundtree percent?
Roundtree Park.
Roundtree Park.
Mm-hmm, under the pavil, under the stage.
There's, there's.
There's that seats. So we got that. So we got that.
Commissioner Durham, and thank you all for doing this. You know, I'm really close to that, I would not be here today, but I need to be there when you all are.
You can tune into the live, because we will be going live. Yes, ma'am. Yes, we gonna go live. But my thing is, we, we got to put something in place. We got to have a reason, a voice in our city, and as, as elected official, as a young person in our community, I, it would be, it would be, it would be travesty of me if I just sit there and don't address and don't say nothing to our young people. And let me say this, too. I had a lot of calls, even from family members, were saying about our policing, that, you know, they may say, "Well, I feel harassed, I feel harassed." But in those areas, we got to beef up our policing, because we don't know who's the shooters, we don't know the things that's going on. But my question was, to them was, did you create, did you, um, do a crime? They say no. I say, so did you do anything wrong? They say no. I say, so change your mentality to not, to not just think that they're harassing you, they serving and protecting you, because we don't know what's going on. So therefore, the, the, the patrolling has beefed up, and we thank our City Douglas Police Department for that, because that's how oath is served and taken. And a lot of the things have been going on, like some of the days have been canceled at the parks, but we, we look out for the safety of the citizens, and we thank our police po, we thank our Mayor and Mission on that, to, for just considering the safety of the people. And I'm just gonna leave that question, if y'all are able to come on Thursday at six o'clock, because we got to make a difference. And I thank Minister Paula and Minister Newton for reaching out to different ones in our community and stuff, and that, for the ones they have not reached out to, we thank them, because we need to start somewhere. We need to start somewhere. And I'm just gonna leave the question again, when will this end? Are we gonna sit on the stool and do nothing? Y'all people, are we gonna talk to each other, and we gonna squash our beef and move on? Because we are the future, we are today. And so that's all I got to say. I didn't come to beat nobody up, but that's all I had to say was on my heart. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner Durham. Thank you very much. And thank you, Pastor Newton, and the justice favor.
So does anyone have anything to say before our turn? You good? You good? Works good. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been motioned, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.